Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 12:00 PM meeting of June 4th, 2018. We're glad to have such an enthusiastic crowd out there. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the department...
I'm here.
Freeman's here.
Oh, sorry. To the department budget workshop items only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, we have the Department Budget Presentation. The first presentation is from Visit Bakersfield.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. David Lyman with Visit Bakersfield. Recently, I had a conversation with a young resident of Bakersfield. He had moved away to the big city and has since returned home. He told me that the only time he gets to see his friends is when he goes to visit them. Because when he invites them to Bakersfield, they tell him there's nothing to see and do there.
Oh, my goodness.
And when he continued, I interrupted him, and I said, "What do you say?" He said, "Excuse me?" I said, "When your friends say there's nothing to see and do here, what do you say?" Well, he mumbled a few things. He was not astellar defensive of his hometown, nor was it a 10-second elevator speech. He really didn't have much to say. Later, he told me that he knows that we have a hard time attracting people to Bakersfield, and we should spend our money focusing on large communities where his friends live so we can get people to come to Bakersfield. I told him I had a slightly different perspective, that Bakersfield regularly hosts state and regional conventions, meetings, sports events. Besides, there are thousands of people passing through Bakersfield every day on the freeways and on passenger rail. We have no problem getting people to come to Bakersfield. Our challenge, I told him, is to get them to stay longer and to spend their money. He thought about that for a minute, not thought about those kind of things. And at the end of the conversation, he told me he was sad because as long as he lived in Bakersfield, his friends would not come and visit him. I said, "Your friends won't come and visit you based upon where you live?" He said that was correct. My reply, "Well, perhaps you need to get yourself a new set of friends." I tell you this story not because I think it's unique, but because this fellow's observations are shared by many people in our community, namely that there's nothing to see and do here, and that Bakersfield is not a place that attracts visitors. In the few minutes I have with you today, I want to show you how our efforts at Visit Bakersfield work to counter those perceptions. After all, it's those local residents who are our ambassadors to family and friends who come to visit. Each year around this time, I come before you and tell you our official goal is to promote Bakersfield as a convention and visitor destination to increase transient occupancy tax and sales tax revenue. And each year, I tell you, our real goal is to help people spend their money. Visit Bakersfield is fully funded through transient occupancy tax revenues. We receive no general fund monies. We're a division of the City Manager's Office, and we are an example of an absolutely, positively successful partnership between the City of Bakersfield and the Greater Bakersfield Convention and Visitors Bureau. We're in the 11th year of this successful partnership where city staff handles the day-to-day functions of the CVB. Its board approved our budget, requested its May 16th meeting, and recommended its approval to you today. Representing the board in the audience is the CVB's vice chair, Jenny Gatlin, the lady sitting right over here, the general manager of the Courtyard by Marriott Hotel. I thank her and other members of the board for their continued support and to maintain and strengthen Bakersfield's travel and tourism sector. We have a staff complement of four full-time employees, so 25% of our staff is standing right before you today. We're a small group of people, but we make big things happen. So let's take a look at what's been happening. The first indicator is TOT revenue. The city's TOT rate is 12% of the hotel rate. This chart shows TOT revenues from fiscal year '05-'06 until now. In '05-'06, TOT revenues were $7.46 million. In the current fiscal year, the city's Finance Department estimates TOT revenues will come in at a record-breaking $9.8 million, its highest level ever. That's an increase of more than 31%. When we look at other indicators, we see that ADR, which is the average daily rate charged by hotels, has remained flat in 2017 compared with 2016, but the number of hotel room nights sold increased by more than 5%. So the increase in TOT revenue did not come from hotels raising their rates, but by more people buying more hotel nights in Bakersfield. Now let's look at where visitors spend their money. These 2017 figures were just released a few weeks ago. Visitors to Kern County primarily spend their money on food service, the orange slice, local transportation and gas, yellow, and accommodations, light blue. Those three categories account for 2/3 of visitor spending. Not surprisingly, visitor air transportation, which is that very tiny sliver in the upper right, was less than 1%. If you look at the lower right, you will see that visitor spending in 2017 increased almost 6% over 2016. Now let's look at how many jobs were supported by visitor spending. In 2017, about 60% of the jobs supported by visitor spending were in accommodations and food service, that's the light blue, with an additional 25% in arts, entertainment, and recreation, the orange. If you look at the lower right, you will see that the number of jobs supported by visitor spending last year increased by more than 8%. So, in summary, TOT is up. The number of hotel room nights, up. Travel spending, up. Jobs supported by travel spending, also up. But the people we serve are not just visitors. We handle numerous requests from human resource professionals, people interviewing for jobs, new residents, real estate agents, business owners, real estate investors, and referrals from the Chamber of Commerce and other organizations. Now let me quickly show you what we've been doing the past year to help drive those numbers that you have just seen. First, let's look at some numbers for groups and events we facilitated, $23.9 million. That's the estimated economic impact of events we facilitated this year that will held either this year or will be held in subsequent years. Those events will attract about 89,100 delegates. Those delegates will book 60,400 hotel room nights. Those delegates will generate more TOT and more visitor spending. Now let me briefly show you some of those events. This was the fourth year we sponsored the Media Day at the Kern County Raceway Park, and this was the best one of those four years yet because it was held in the pit. Those in attendance, including Mayor Go, got a taste, a feel, and a smell of what NASCAR racing really is like. CIF Wrestling returned to the first weekend of March to Rabobank Arena. As you know, we landed this event for a five-year stint, and this was year number four. Visit Bakersfield had an ad in the program to encourage people to use our website. We also had an information table in the lobby. It's been more than 30 years, and the Western Street Rod Nationals keep returning to Kern County Fairgrounds every April. This year was no exception. The event drew 1,680 entrants from across the country, and the long-distance winner was from Pecaya, Pennsylvania. USA BMX returned to Bakersfield after an absence of several years and held two events at Metro BMX. The event in May, just this past few weeks, attracted more than 1,500 participants. Our largest convention each year is the Jehovah's Witnesses Watchtower Convention. They're in Bakersfield for six weekends during the summer at Rabobank Arena and bring an average of 6,000 delegates to each one. The Barbershoppers, they returned to Bakersfield after an absence of many years. The Far Western District of the Barbershop Harmony Society held its convention at Rabobank Theater for its members in Hawaii, California, Nevada, and Arizona. Bakersfield is very popular with acapella singing groups because the Sweet Adelines again held their annual convention here, also at Rabobank Theater. I'm happy to tell you, we have the Sweet Adelines booked in Bakersfield through the year 2022. We've also facilitated many soccer and softball tournaments throughout Bakersfield. With the expansions at Kaiser Permanente Sports Village and Torina Homes Sports Complex at Mesa Marin, we have the opportunity to bring even more sports events to Bakersfield. In addition to those large events and groups, we also focus on the individual traveler. So let me share some of those efforts with you now. We produced a new Arrival Guide, more than 60 pages of fun things to see and do in Bakersfield. While we created it with a visitor in mind, we have found it has quickly become in demand throughout our city. Personnel recruiters want copies when they are trying to bring new hires to Bakersfield. Real estate agents use it to attract new home buyers here. And new residents who have recently moved to our city quickly find that provides them with value information to get settled. When people ask for information about Bakersfield, the official Bakersfield Arrival Guide is the publication that Bakersfield turns to. We promote positive news and events about Bakersfield every day. We use social media like Facebook and Instagram. We have posters of events in our lobby. We have email blasts, and we have a dynamic events calendar on our website, visitbakersfield.com. Speaking of our website, we had more than 261,000 unique visitors to our site this past year, and 79% of them were first-time visits. This year, we've expanded into videos. I know you've seen them. We've produced several with more set to debut in the next year. These videos have received lots of positive press and have been hits on social media. You can find them on our webpage, on Facebook, on Instagram, and on YouTube. We regularly are invited to submit articles to the Kern Business Journal about the local travel industry, and we've been successful in generating positive local press coverage. You may have also seen positive articles from travel writers. I'm here to tell you that those travel articles just do not simply happen. They're a result of travel writers contacting us and asking for possible ideas for their stories, and us making contacts with our local travel partners to arrange visits and coordinate their schedules. We recently had some of our promotional materials translated into Chinese as part of our efforts with the Central Valley Tourism Association, further increasing our reach to potential visitors. We coordinate regular meetings with our local museums to help share information among their members, and also to assure that we know of upcoming events and plans to better promote them and visitors to residents alike. One way we reach local residents is with presentations to various groups. So if you are a member of a service club or a professional organization and you need a speaker, you know how to reach me. We continue to promote our website and our More to Explore tagline wherever we can. One highly visible location we targeted recently is the sign in the S Street median on the approach to the Amtrak station. We also promote Visit Bakersfield at events that we sponsor with our big banners, such as at the USA BMX Golden State Champions and the Western Street Rod Nationals. This past year, we began distributing customer comment cards. We give them to visitors as they leave our office and also include them in packets that we mail out when people request information on our city. The cards have postage on them, and they're pre-addressed. And because we are so confident in the quality of the customer service that we provide, those cards are not addressed back to us. They're addressed back to the City Manager's Office. Here are two examples of cards that were sent back recently. The one on the left says, "Convince us to make it a stop on our road trip." The one on the right says, "We came into Bakersfield to visit family, but we did not know what activities were available during our visit. There is so, underlined, so much to see and do. Thank you for talking us through the options." Each of these visitors came to Bakersfield and spent money because of the assistance they received from our office. When I came before you last year, I told you we just hired a new marketing and events specialist. In addition to the videos I showed you earlier, he has also updated and created several promotional pieces, such as a driving tour, a local guide to craft beer, details on our local farmers' markets, and where to go camping. Now, you may wonder why we have information about camping when our goal is to send people to hotels and increase TOT revenue. Simply, it's because we were regularly asked about where can we go camping when we come to Bakersfield. So the customer comment card in these promotional pieces are just two examples of how we listen to the voice of the visitor. The voice of the visitor. That feedback from our customers helps us maintain an outstanding array of information in our city, and it never gets old. For those of us of a certain age, it reminds me of the old Pacific Bell Yellow Pages commercial. If it isn't in here, it probably doesn't exist. In addition to these efforts that I just mentioned, we've been impacted by the closure of the Kern County Board of Trade's Visitor Center on Oak Street. That building is now the Kern County Family Justice Center, leaving us as the only visitor center in Bakersfield. The inquiries that used to be handled at the Board of Trade, both in person and by telephone, are coming to us. We welcome the opportunity to assist even more visitors, but I want you to know that we're even more busy than we have been in the past. For the coming year, Visit Bakersfield is proposing to continue our successful events as well as absorbing the inquiries from the Board of Trade for the low, low price of only $772,959. You will note this amount has only one comma in it. Our proposed budget, thank you, courtesy laugh from the staff, our proposed budget breaks down as follows. $427,102 for salaries and benefits, that's a reduction of 1.6% due to retirement of a secretary position last December, and $345,857 for our operating budget, which is a 23.4% increase. We're proposing five key areas to further boost TOT and visitor spending that can be managed by our existing staff. Those five proposed areas are as follows. First, we propose to expand the distribution of our marketing materials beyond Bakersfield. Many of our visitors are going to or coming from Yosemite, Sequoia, and Las Vegas. We know it because that's what they tell us when they're in our office. When you look at this map, you will see Bakersfield is smack dab in the middle of that traffic flow. We propose to expand the distribution of our marketing materials to locations near Yosemite, Sequoia, and throughout Las Vegas. However, instead of distributing our 64-page Arrival Guide, we will develop a much smaller and less expensive lure brochure to highlight Bakersfield. Next, we propose to develop additional print and social media advertising. Due to our past budgets, most of our print advertising has been cooperative ads, like this one, where we get about a quarter or an eighth of a page. Now be honest, Bakersfield didn't really jump out at you in that ad, did it? With additional funds, we can purchase standalone ads like this to give Bakersfield a higher profile, and we can combine print ads with social media advertising to increase the impact of those efforts. Third, we propose to develop cooperative promotional efforts with our four local raceways. The proximity of Auto Club Flamosa Raceway, Bakersfield Speedway, Bluttenrill Raceway Park, and Kern County Raceway Park provide Bakersfield the opportunity to develop an auto-based promotional effort. And this idea came to us with discussions with representatives of the local raceways. Next, we want to focus on what we call inbound travel. While Bakersfield sees lots of tour buses, they tend to stay only for the night and then move on. We want to add a bus tour market trade show to help raise our visibility with those bus tour operators to convince them to stay in Bakersfield longer. And finally, we propose to refurbish the old Board of Trade sign. You may recall this sign, you've seen many years, adjacent to northbound Highway 99, just south of the Kern River. It was used to promote local events by the Board of Trade, and this photo shows what it looked like in 1970. This is what it looks like today. It's decayed, it's rusted, it's tagged, and it presents an absolutely poor impression of our city. Its location provides an opportunity to present something positive to motorists on one side and those on the Kern River Parkway Trail on the other. Here are our service-level indicators for the coming year. The estimated economic impact of events booked during the current year to be realized in this or future fiscal years increases slightly to $24 million. Room nights booked during the current fiscal year to be realized in this or future fiscal years, again, increasing slightly to 61,000. Delegates from meetings booked during the current fiscal year who will stay during this or current or future fiscal years increases to 89,850. And we will respond to 1,550 requests for information. We will also plan on attending 12 trade shows to promote Bakersfield. In addition to our operating budget proposal, we have submitted a request to the city's capital improvement budget for a new electronic sign in front of our building. The existing sign has stopped working altogether. While its original intent was to promote Bakersfield and local events, it now sits as a dark, water-stained hulk in front of the city's visitor center. The proposed cost for the new sign is $50,000. It would have a minimalist cabinet similar to the one shown on the right, rather than keeping the existing cabinet and simply replacing the display unit as shown on the left. Our action plan for the year ahead is as follows. We will continue to target local residents who belong to professional organizations that hold regular regional and state meetings with the goal of attracting those meetings to Bakersfield. We will continue to promote Bakersfield as a point of destination for both group and individual travel. We will continue to focus on value-added tourism, such as attracting new events and visitors, retaining existing events and visitors, and increasing spending and tax revenue generated by those existing events and visitors. In closing, here are a few things to watch for in the year ahead. The National Onion Association, first time ever, will bring its summer convention to Bakersfield July 18th through 21st. CIF Wrestling will return in 2019, but with some exciting changes. First, the event will combine both boys and girls wrestling. The girls' wrestling had previously been held in Visalia. Next, combining boys and girls wrestling means the event will expand from two to three days, more people and more hotel room nights. That's welcome news because we will no longer have CIF and March Meet competing for limited hotel rooms on the same weekend. With these two large events on separate weekends, each of them will have room to grow. Our largest hotel, the Doubletree by Hilton, will undergo a $10 million renovation directly across Rosedale Highway. The former Clarion Hotel will finish its renovation and rebranded as a Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott. And we expect the Hyatt Place on Coffee Road north of Stockdale Highway to open and add 118 rooms to Bakersfield's hotel inventory. This is the team that makes it all happen, Team More to Explore. Joe Simpson, our marketing and events specialist. Corinne Parsons, clerk typist. Today is her last day after serving with us on a temporary assignment for the past six months. Matt Billingsley, our sales manager, and Andrea Marakine, our guest services representative who started with us last week. Today is day number five for her in her office. These are the people who do the hard work, they do the heavy lifting, and they allow me to come and share the good news with you and to represent to Bakersfield's residents and visitors alike the very best, the very best of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyman. Councilmember Sullivan.
Wonderful, David. Just a great presentation. Good information. I loved your intro, but just all good information. Your intro included all of the things that are happening, all of the conferences. People are coming into town. So yes, the challenge is how to get them to stay longer and, of course, spend their money, which has always been your very important theme. So David, we are blessed to have you. You know, you're certainly not short on enthusiasm, but it gives us something. I'm glad you gave the story that you did about the young man that knew we had a lot to offer here in town, but what was his response? So it's kind of up to all of us to just have the right answers and to love our city and help promote our city because we're free of charge and we know best. And so we do need to learn these things and have an answer and continually promote. And the Arrival Guide, that is, how often is that updated? And how long have we had that?
Mayor, Councilmember Sullivan, that current publication came out in December of last year. We've already gone through half of our inventory of 40,000, so we'll be doing a reprint. We probably won't do an update for another year or so because it's very time-consuming and we don't have a lot of staff. But we will update it, and I'm glad that you like it.
Oh, yes, that's important. I've noticed that in other cities, you know, the larger cities. And that's how we know, you know, my experience as everyone, when we go to someplace and just going to be there a couple of days, don't know anything, we're there for a specific reason and don't really know anything about the city, that's what we look for and we go through it and get an idea of what's going on and what makes that city very, you know, what they prize most and what makes them significant. So David, you're on the right track, and we do appreciate your efforts, and you've given us something to think about, but just a lot of good information.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Freeman.
I agree, Dave. Great presentation and really appreciate all your efforts. I thought I would just give a little perspective from the private sector of what we used to spend on marketing, not sales, exactly what you're doing for like six Bakersfield projects model comp. We would spend at least $3 million a year because that's what it took to hit the different media, TV, radio, social media, print. And I look at how you're operating on what is a real bare-bones budget, and I just thought it's important that people know with this thin a budget, you can only do so much to generate people coming to Bakersfield. You just can't run the ads that you need and do the promotions you need. And I applaud you in what you've accomplished on this budget. But just so people know what others will spend, and I'm sure there's cities that spend five times what we do, it takes a lot of money to promote, to bring people from outside into our town, not just get the people in our town going to events, but we talked earlier about we need to bring people in. That outreach is very expensive, and lots of cities are doing it. And I just thought I'd give a little perspective on what you're operating with versus what we just for our Bakersfield projects alone used to spend. So thanks for your effort, and maybe some way we can get you more resources. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. David, thank you so much for your presentation and for all the work that you do day in and day out for the city. I wondered, you know, when you talk to different organizations and compete to bring conventions into the Bakersfield area, into Bakersfield, and we are not successful, what are people saying? What are the lessons that we're learning? How to become more competitive? And how do we compete on a grander scale?
Mayor, Councilmember Gonzalez, thank you for your comments. As you know, we're in sales, and any time you're in sales, most of the times you don't land the customer. So you're always looking at what you can do to get the next time. So we are very targeted on the markets that we go after, and a lot of them we go after are youth sports, and we have outstanding facilities. So that gives us a competitive advantage, especially with the two ones that I mentioned to you. We are primed for attracting more of those youth sports, and we have really good venues. The one thing that trips us up is air service, commercial air service. So that's outside of our control, so that's why we tend to focus on state and regional events that you can drive to because we can't promote ourselves to something that you're going to fly to. So that is, if I could wave a magic wand, I would like to have more commercial air service that we could promote ourselves on a grander scale.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lyman, it's always a pleasure to work together with you, and I hear such positive feedback from the groups that you do bring in. They feel that Bakersfield is very easy to work with and very hospitable. So thank you very much. If you could wave that magic wand again that you just talked about, where would you choose to invest? What area do you think would bring the greatest return on investment if you had some more money to invest? So this is a different pot, something that we can control beyond transportation.
Can I get back to you on that?
Sure. Yeah, think about it.
Let me ponder that.
Yeah, think about it. Where would be the greatest return on investment if we had greater flexibility in spending?
I would be happy to and get an answer to you shortly.
Because you don't want to waste your wand, David. You have to be specific.
That sounds like a cross-stitch pillow. I think I'm going to do that. You don't want to waste your wand. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next workshop is Developmental Services.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Once again, I have the unfortunate circumstance of following David Lyman, who's probably the most articulate and polished speaker among all of us. But thank you, David, for your presentation. I am joined today by the representatives, the managers of each of the divisions within our department. Phil Burns, the building director, is here. Kevin Coyle, the planning director, is here. Hayward Cox, the community development coordinator, is here. And Misty Eaton, our business manager, is here with me today. So first, I want to talk a little bit about our name, Development Services. We were formerly known as Community Development, and you might have noticed that earlier this year, our department name changed back to the more familiar name of Development Services. And there were a few reasons for this. Some of you may know that prior to 2013, there was a separate department known as the Economic and Community Development Department that existed separately and had a staff of up to 22 people that were highly specialized individuals that administered the federal HUD programs and redevelopment. However, in 2013, the governor removed redevelopment, and so that department was downsized to about six employees, pardon me, to about six employees and merged with Development Services, and the name was changed to Community Development. Those six remaining employees were kind of wedged in under the planning division, but they still continued to provide those services. And in the years since the merge, the department has continued to provide critical community development activities and administer the federal programs. However, in addition to this, we also provide critical code enforcement activities. We conduct more than 100 building inspections each day. We complete comprehensive review of building permits and grading permits. And we also provide planning and development services which help our city to grow and prosper. This department, and our department is also expanding our economic development function, and we hope to do more of that in the future. So therefore, earlier this year, we made the decision to go back to our name of Development Services. We're going to do that. Services, and because we believe that this better encompasses the broad range of activities that are provided by our department, which again now includes the Building Division, the Planning Division, and the Economic and Community Development Unit. The purpose again in changing this name back was to provide better visibility to the public, ensure greater customer service, and demonstrate that our division will continue to work together to continue to facilitate the future of Bakersfield. This is a breakdown of our overall org chart. So you can see, we have quite a few staff doing quite a few different things, and we're going to talk a little bit about those today. The overall department's budget, which does include our federal HUD entitlement, is shown here. As you can see, there was a moderate, modest increase in salaries and wages and operating budgets, but that was due to a shifting in the federal HUD allocation. The important thing to note here is that overall, the department's general fund allocation has decreased by more than 1% in line with the budget instructions this year. Our staffing levels remain flat. As you can see, for the last six years, we've had roughly the same amount of staff and no change is being proposed this year. And now I'd like to talk a little bit about the accomplishments for the department overall. Again, several different divisions working together on several key things that bring development and growth for our city. The first is the department has worked together to entitle, plan check, and complete construction and renovation to several vacant buildings throughout the city, and I'll show you a couple of examples of that now. One is the building at Rosedale Highway in Callaway Drive in northwest Bakersfield. This was a pharmacy building that has sat vacant for a number of years. The building department helped ensure that that building was completely renovated, and a brand-new facade was put in, and the city now has its first studio movie grill, which is a dine-in movie theater. Another example is the Target Building, the former Target Building on Ming Avenue and Wyville Road. As many of us know, that building did sit vacant for a number of years, and staff worked closely with the new ownership to fully renovate that building as well and turn it into a furniture city. And I don't know if you've been inside, but it's quite nice, quite large, and has quite a few new trees and landscaping, and it's definitely an entirely different look than it was previously. Another long, kind of famous vacant building is the former CompUSA Building on California Avenue. Staff worked with that new owner to do tenant improvements and various inspections to create a new fitness club at that location. And then the department also worked to facilitate the construction of several new large projects throughout the city. One example is the Commercial Plaza at Coffee Road and Stockdale Road. As we all know, this parcel sat vacant for over 20 years in the middle of the city, and it is now going through its various stages of development, and about a third of it's completed today. Staff also worked with the new ownership for the Valley Children's Healthcare Site at Stockdale Highway and Allen Road in the western part of Bakersfield, and this hospital is coming close to completion. And as you can see, it's quite an iconic building that's being constructed in our city. Staff also worked with the owners of the Valley Plaza Mall to develop the out parcels along Ming Avenue. Some of you may remember that the Sears Building had a tire and auto maintenance repair out on the edge of that property that was demolished several years ago, and the parking lot has been renovated with several new restaurants, including the Texas Roadhouse shown here, with several more due to open this coming year. Staff also worked to renovate with the owners of the property on Mount Vernon Avenue, just south of Highway 178, to bring a new grocery store to that part of the city, a new Smart &amp; Final, as well as several restaurants in east Bakersfield. Another development in east Bakersfield that's very important is new commercial development out off of Highway 178 in Comanche. This project is undergoing construction for several restaurants, a gas station, that are all due to open by the end of this year. And phase two of that development may include an additional grocery store or drugstore out at that location, and that'll serve a need for the residents of that area. Back on the west side of town, staff has also worked to entitle and inspect new phases of development in Mustang Square, and that is at Ming Avenue and Buena Vista Road. That facilitated several new restaurants and service providers. As David mentioned earlier, many travelers into Bakersfield spend a great deal of their money on food services and other similar type activities, and you can really see that in some of the new development that's occurring throughout the city. The West Ming specific plan also had quite a bit of activity this year. That included, let's see, everything within the Seven Oaks Business Park, the Belcourt Residential Project, and the Highgate Residential Development. We can look at those a little more closely. The Seven Oaks Business Park had several new phases opened this year, and this is on Bolt House Drive and Buena Vista Road. Notably, there's, the Bolt House Office Building has opened, as well as several new small restaurants that are coming online this year. And at Belcourt, several new phases of residential development have been constructed, as well as their clock tower, as you can see in the photo down at the left. And not to be outdone, Highgate also completed its clock tower earlier this year and several new phases of residential development there. And then finally, there was additional phases of residential development at Stockdale Ranch, which is on Stockdale Highway just west of Renfro Road. So now drilling down a little bit into the different divisions of the department, the Planning Division has, as you may know, three different units plus the Economic and Community Development Unit that I mentioned earlier, and these are some of the things that those units oversee. Some of the notable things are they administer the Planning Commission hearings, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, they administer the Trust Group that implements our Habitat Conservation Plan, and a number of other items is listed here. This is the Planning Division's budget history. No surprises here, relatively flat budget once again, minor increase in the operating budget again due to a shifting of the federal funds for capital improvement projects, but overall, a 1% increase. Some of the accomplishments of the Planning Division this year were adoption by your council of the final high-speed rail vision plan. That was two years in the making, and this plan was adopted by your council on May 9th of 2018. And this was important because it laid a groundwork for future development of the downtown area in Bakersfield and also provided assurances for future investors in what our council hopes to see in our downtown area. Another accomplishment is reinitiation of annexations. In 2016, the division identified 10 island annexations throughout our city that are under 150 acres and established a goal of slowly annexing those over time, and we've had many successes on that front and continue to move forward. The department has also processed 16 general plan amendments and zone change applications, and you can see from this map that they're located in all areas of the city, and a majority of these are taking single-family type land and converting it to multifamily or higher-density type development or additional commercial development. The department has also continued to maintain compliance with our Habitat Conservation Plan. We've continued to meet our ratio of one-to-one requirements for conservation land, and we also revamped our website completely to make the plan a little easier for developers to adhere to, to understand, and to help expedite that process. The first floor of our department is the planning counter. They're kind of the front door to the Planning Division, and they're who most people see when they walk in the door to our building. That division processed over 82 site plan reviews, 49 new conditional use permit applications, and 12 zoning modification applications. And that department also helped facilitate the continued development of what I call our big three commercial projects. The first one is the Bakersfield Commons Project. This one was entitled about two years ago, but they're going through the stages now of refining those entitlements and developing their site plans, and several of those site plans are actually scheduled for the Planning Commission hearing later this week. We also continue to work with the owners of the Gateway Commercial Project, and they have announced that they will have a Bass Pro constructed there. And this is the site plan that they have on their website, and it shows some of the conceptual development options, and staff meets with them and talks with them about how that development can occur. And the next step will be for them to come in and have an actual site plan approved through the planned commercial development process, and we hope that that will occur sometime this summer or later this fall. The third big project is, of course, the City Lights Project, which is the former East Hills Mall. Earlier in April, the Planning Division took forward a comp sign plan for this project. The owners of that project told us this was their first big step in securing the leases they need to begin construction, and at last count, they reported to us that they plan to begin demolition activities in the third quarter of this year. The Planning Division also, as I mentioned, administers the Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Adjustment hearings, and those occur right here in this room. Some of the goals for the upcoming year for the Planning Division include continuing to work with the High Speed Rail Authority as they continue to navigate their process at the state level, particularly in studying the locally generated alternative. The Planning Division also plans to begin the initial research stages for preparing a comprehensive update to our Metropolitan General Plan. And the Planning Division also will continue to work on preparation of the new HCP, which will replace our existing HCP that's currently set to expire in August of next year. And now I'll talk a little bit about the Economic and Community Development Unit. As many of you know, this unit administers our CDBG, Hopewa Home ESG programs, and provides critical services to the income-qualified areas within our community, and also includes an economic development function. These are some of those responsibilities here that I just discussed. Some of the accomplishments of this unit this year are that the unit completed construction of the third building of the Creekview Villa Townhomes along the Mill Creek Corridor, and I am excited to announce that five of those seven units have now closed escrow. So there's only two left to sell, and then it will be complete. So that's a big accomplishment. The department also brought forward a potential developer for the remaining entertainment piece of the parcel, and that is the Discovery Venture Group. They currently operate an entertainment facility in Ventura. These are some photos of it here. And they, your council approved a letter of intent in May to, or I'm sorry, in April for them to begin discussions for development of that site with a 38,000-square-foot mixed-use entertainment-type venue that would have bowling lanes, a concert venue, basement speakeasy, karaoke rooms, food and service beverages, and more. This unit also assisted downtown stakeholders in their efforts to establish a downtown business improvement district and also assisted with the development of a downtown parking strategy. The unit also completed rehabilitation of the Green Gardens SRO, which preserved 102 units of permanent supportive housing for persons transitioning from homelessness. And the unit also worked with our consultant to secure a $200,000 grant for brownfield redevelopment, and we're beginning to execute the first stages of that grant, and it will study and identify opportunities for infill and redevelopment throughout our city and eventually pave the path forward for future loans or grant programs, I should say, to clean up those sites and make them ready for development. This is an allocation of the federal breakdown. Your council is very familiar with this already, as you've approved the action plan in April, so I won't go into too much detail again. But overall, there were roughly $4.9 million in federal funding. As you can see, that's a significant part of the department's budget that's allocated as shown here. And some of the accomplishments from these funding over the last year were to fund the Bakersfield Police Department's Impact Team, and that provides benefits to the residents within Roads 1 and 2. And then to continue to work with the Public Works Department to use CDBG funds for eligible curb gutter sidewalk improvements throughout the city. And the department has several goals for the upcoming year and for those federal funds, and that's to initiate the Baker Street Neighborhood LED Lighting Improvement Project within Ward 2, and to also initiate the Oleander Neighborhood Street Lighting Upgrade within Ward 2, and to continue with improvements to the McMurtry Aquatic Center, as well as fund the bark tire recycling program. Some of the other goals for the unit are to continue development of a MILZAC program if there's interest, and to continue to provide staff support with the applications for transformative climate communities grants, and to assist with the Historic Preservation Commission, and then, of course, to continue monitoring, reporting our previous CDBG activities. And now Phil Burns will be here, is here to discuss the Planning Division's, or I'm sorry, the Building Division's accomplishments and goals over the last year.
Thank you, Jackie. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, my pleasure to present the Building Division budget for the 1819 fiscal year. This slide depicts our proposed budget, which is within the budget guidelines, a 1.48% operating increase. And we'll take a couple of slides to take a look at the billing activity. This slide shows overall total permits. We're about 1,000 permits behind the previous fiscal year. As you can see, we've kind of peaked in the 1516. It seems like it's been slowing down slightly. Most of our indicators are telling us that this is going to increase far as housing. We're currently 133 houses behind last year. Some of this is due to the change in how development takes place. Back in 2000, 2006, 2007, basically, houses are being built prior to roads going in. Now, all those old subdivisions have now been bought up, built out. Now we're now building on new tracks. Those have to get to a situation where basically roads are being built before production houses. So it's a kind of a little change in the methodology and development, and that's causing some of this lulls, what I'm being told, and I would expect to see a little bit of a pickup in that soon. Then our other big change has been in solar. So you can see in 1516, we had almost 5,000 solar permits. Now we're down to 3,400. A lot of that's due to some of the saturation in the market. The other is, in this current fiscal year, solar, and I'm sure a lot of you have heard, is going to be mandated in the next building code for all new houses. Well, in the energy code, you can either elect to build solar with your house, or you have to do some other energy improvements. So some of these numbers that were in the previous years, the separate solar permits, are now in some of the houses. So that's about 20% of the houses, so there's still about another probably 100 to 200 permits of solars that are actually being included and not shown in this particular graph because of that change. Some of our accomplishments, code enforcement is extremely busy with dealing with homeless encampments and trying to work with the collaborative, with the impact teams, but they're spending a large amount of their time in trying to assist businesses and trying to address some of the homeless encampments. Our CitySource app is up now on the code enforcement. For those who haven't used it, please try it out. It works well. We have our about top nine code enforcement, most typical code enforcement cases that are out there to use. And our, finally, our last phase of our remodel is just about done in our building, which will have a conference room for people to come in and provide presentations to planning and stuff, more of the big shows. This slide shows our building permits throughout the city. It's kind of hard to tell, but the red dots or the new construction, new single-family and commercial, you can kind of see them kind of around the perimeter of the city and some out in the northeast. And all the other ones are all the little blue dots. That's anything from a residential remodel, solar, any other projects. This kind of shows that there's activity citywide. Some of these projects Jackie's already talked about, so I'll kind of go over them quickly. 178 Comanche, we have a gas station and a Taco Bell going up, new hotels, stuff going out Coffee &amp; Brim Hall, and more office buildings out Stockdale, Allen, and then a lot of medical out of Real Bravo Point. So it's kind of exciting to still see this much commercial activity going on. Code enforcement, again, code enforcement's been extremely busy. Our housing violations, which are housing code things, have been, are down slightly. Not really, it's about 50 different complaints. These are complaint-driven. But you'll notice our encampments, again, 161 cases the previous year were 414. And this is not the river. And a lot of people think that we're focusing on the river and all these code enforcement encampments that we're dealing with, a river, that's probably about the 161 of them, that's the Kern River. The rest of that is other public properties. This is canals. This is underneath different city facilities. So it's extremely busy on that side of things. And this is some of the typical code enforcement type cases we deal with. This particular one was a gas explosion on King Street. That particular structure was to a point, damaged a point that had to be removed. Then down below is kind of an example of what we're dealing with on some of the city property, public property, where we're having huge homeless encampments, and again, what it looks like afterwards, going to be before and after. Some of our goals is to continue to pursue different Some of our goals is to continue to pursue different items that will help us improve our public service, our customer service. So a lot of these goals are to do that. It includes handouts, different things we do for, as providing developers more information that's clearer how to meet codes. And we're still exploring a method of electronic plan check, and be able to hopefully facilitate quicker plan check turnarounds, less lost plans, and that would help many departments, not just us. And with that, that concludes our budget presentation and open it up for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Phil, or Jackie, either one, both of you, probably. The department or unit that I have the most contact with is obviously code enforcement. And I just want to thank you for the professionalism. They're very can-do. They've never told me, I don't think they've ever told me no, as far as taking care of something. Sometimes I get accused of being an adjunct code enforcement officer out there in my area. I also want to thank you on the city sourced thing. Excuse me. We talked about that several times. It was something I pushed for. I think that serves our community, city of Bakersfield, a lot better, having that availability. Jackie, I just want to thank you, Planning Department, Paul, for all the activities that have happened within Ward Seven. Furniture City, we had multiple conversations regarding that one. And I just want to thank you personally for, you know, thinking outside the box, looking at maybe the spirit of the code sometimes, and not necessarily the letter of the code. That's a great project now. I think it's probably the largest furniture city, or furniture store in the city, possibly, along with Valley Plaza. We had another issue over there, too, with the Road House and the new pad there with Blaze Pizza and stuff, and that's a wonderful project. And again, I just want to thank you and your staff for that also. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Jackie. Thanks, Phil, for the presentation. Quick question, and this is for Phil. I don't know if I missed it, but at the end, your second bullet here, did you talk about this small-scale proactive code enforcement program to include CDBG components? What does that mean? What are we talking about?
Councilmember Rivera, I'm working with the Economic Development Group to identify, we've identified a block off of, God, it's by the Pell Community Center, to take a block. There's a couple vacant lots, and we're trying to partnership with, I'm trying to take the, Hayward. Habitat for Humanity, where we're able to have them come in, build a couple houses, partner with a front porch program. And that's, that's still, we're trying to get that developed, and kind of a three-block radius code enforcement, really proactive program to really see what we can do for a neighborhood.
Okay. So I recall bringing that item up, gosh, even way back when, when Doug Mackay's at, was at the department. And that was with connecting the Habitat for Humanity. I guess I'm curious, have we gotten really any further? Are we still really in the planning stages of trying to redo? Still planning?
In terms of which project, sorry, Councilmember Rivera?
Well, so if I, so as the idea originally started, we began with a list of, we actually began with a list of city-owned properties that Habitat for Humanity was interested in remodeling or doing something useful with, because they were not being used at all. So it sounds like it's maybe expanded into, or shifted to something else. I'm just wondering whether or not we've started redoing any homes, or if we're still kind of planning.
I think that's one, that one's still in the planning stages, but we have worked with them. They did put in an application, I believe it was two funding cycles ago, and Hayward might be able to speak a little more to that. But there were several properties that they owned, and I believe through the home program, we did make allocations last year and last fiscal year for those properties.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Jackie, well, your department also has some exciting accomplishments. That was an excellent presentation. Two questions. I'm looking at the picture of the clock tower that we, that have been around for a long time, remember from years ago. Is that just showing what was in the past, or is that being thought of in the future?
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, through the mayor. The High Speed Rail Vision Plan included that image as one of the conceptual ideas that the community identified as something they would like to see in the future. That particular image showed the clock tower potentially being reconstructed somewhere in the downtown core area. So it's an idea that's a part of the vision plan, and at some point in the future, if the council or a private developer wanted to move forward with something like that, they could.
I am, that is so beautiful. I am so in favor of that. You know, just right after, it was just right after, or just before I was elected, that, and I can't remember when, it would be interesting to refresh my memory when the clock tower was actually removed, but they were talking about bringing it back. And that is so beautiful. I am so in favor of that. So let's really see if we can make that happen. You know, how wonderful to be, to have something like that, one of the identifying features of our city, which it would be. And always in the past, for years, it was the downtown, the city with the clock tower in the, in the main intersection. So that is just, brings back a lot of memories, and it would just be, that would just be outstanding. And Jackie, also, I'm, the picture that showed the, the name of the City Lights, is that, is that, and of course, I've heard that before, is that going to be the new name for the East Hills Mall?
Yes, Councilmember Sullivan, that's what the project owner has named it.
I see. Wonderful.
So that's the information that we have.
And you used, you used demolished. Is it, are they going to start completely over again?
That is our understanding. Part of the development plans that were proposed for that included complete demolishment of the existing facilities. At one point, there was an idea to keep the theater component itself. However, in recent discussions with the developer, they've, they're anticipating removing that as well and starting from scratch.
Oh, my goodness. That would be, that would be huge, huge expense, but, so that's going to be very exciting. And of course, East Hills Mall was very, very good to identify which mall they were talking about. That was, that was a good name. But also, City Lights, that's wonderful. And tell me again, what developer is the new owner of that?
It's the Carver family that owns it, and they have several partners as well.
Carver is, did you say Carver?
Yes.
And where are they from?
They're local.
That, oh, I see. Oh, my goodness. I wasn't quite sure about that. Well, it's going to be a huge project and very exciting to keep track of. Okay, Jackie, a lot of good things, you know, it's amazing how, how we always are able to come up with something new and great, and so it's very exciting, a lot of good things to look forward to. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Jackie, I just wanted to extend my appreciation to you and your staff and your entire office, entire team, for all the work that they do. We've been working closely with them over the past year on a lot of downtown revitalization efforts, and we have a great partnership, and I appreciate all the work. I also want to give a huge shout-out to code enforcement, who, like Councilman Parlier said, are really the unsung heroes for our communities, and especially our underserved neighborhoods, ensuring that those properties are well-maintained. And so I appreciate all the work that they're doing, and any effort they make to be proactive in, in some of my neighborhoods. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Jackie and team. It's obvious that a lot has been accomplished. Councilmember Parlier mentioned your ability to adapt to the spirit of the code, and that's so important as we look towards being customer-friendly and business-friendly, and thank you for what you've been able to accomplish in that area. You mentioned a lot of new development. Do you happen to know the job impact, or is that some information you can get, just the job impact over the last year on the developments that we've worked on? It seems like we've actually seen a lot of growth, so that would be exciting.
Yeah, I would agree. Mayor, we can certainly get those numbers for you. With the three big commercial projects alone, that'll be quite a bit of construction jobs, and then eventually permanent retail jobs over time. So we will look and see what we can find for you.
Very good. And then, in talking about the annexes, in 2016, you said we identified 10. Where, and a couple of them have been annexed, there was Dunham and Harris.
That's correct.
Are the others in process, or where are the others?
Yeah, so we kind of prioritize based on public input, which of those we should pursue, and based on community input, and we just are kind of approaching them one at a time. There are 10, or there were 10 in 2016, that were all under 150 acres, which is a true island, and they were fully surrounded. So our goal is to work our way through that list.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
That prompts a question on my part. Is the Old Stockdale area, is that one that's currently under consideration? I hear a lot of people talking about it and asking me about it, and I go, gee, I don't know. I mean, right in the middle of the city, but for years, they didn't want to be part of the city. So what's the status of that area?
Jackie, can I jump in?
Absolutely.
Where, Councilmember Freeman, there's a special state law which negates the need for a protest hearing for islands over or under 150 acres. Old Stockdale is above that threshold, so it can be annexed under that procedure. We're waiting for a couple of energetic council members who wear armor to be willing to take that one on and hold neighborhood meetings and get it started. So I know that the person to your left has volunteered in the past, and, you know, it's, the last tried, I think it was over 20 years ago, and so there's been a great turnover in the neighborhood since that time.
There's no push from the neighborhood at this point?
No, I don't think so.
It's usually better.
We've had one or two inquiries, but not a large group of people.
Probably need a list of benefits, just make people aware who live there, well, these are the pros and cons, so they could start looking at it with some fresh eyes. It'll be worthwhile.
And that is something that I've actually directed my staff to begin researching and looking at. Whenever there's any new inhabited annexation occurring, we prepare sort of a info sheet, I guess you could say, that outlines what the property tax increase or decrease would be. Usually, it's a decrease, and some of the other benefits and things that come along with annexation.
Are they all on city sewer? Or foremost, or any, or?
Councilmember Freeman, just a few people along Ash Road. There was an agreement prior to the time when we cut off providing that service, and certain individuals, and I'm going to say it's a dozen, 15 in that area, who are along Ash Road are the only ones that.
So most people are on septic?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Actually, if there's a little, you know, map that this is what exactly the boundaries of, quote, Old Stockdale that you shoot me, I just know exactly which streets and neighborhoods are, are in it.
Certainly, we can get that for you.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. And Diane, yes, in the, in the past, there has been a lot of misinformation among the city and among those residents, and much of it has to do with the taxes going up, which, of course, we know isn't really true. So just having some current information, start working on that will be very helpful. And also, like Bruce mentioned, any, anyone, certainly, especially from the area, that expresses any interest at all, would like to have those names, because it'd love to contact them and encourage them to help us, you know, waive, waive the benefits, and certainly, I just really feel it's the right thing to do, to become part of the city. They are the city, their address is Bakersfield, California, and it's a mutual benefit. And we're, you know, for years, we have wanted to do away with our islands, and yes, about 20 years ago, a little bit, we brought it 20 years ago, we tried, and we, you know, the certain people just that had lived there for years, I don't know if they still live there, but they led the charge of not becoming part of the city, and what a shame. But then we have given, we've, we've given everybody a rest for the last 20 years, time to get started again. And so let's, let's work on that, and appreciate the fact that Bruce will, you know, working together on that, and Castle and Cook, the benefits of our, of our development. So anyway, Jackie, I'd love to talk to you about that, and, but mainly, start getting, start getting some information together that we can use as a promotion and a welcome.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Let's take a break until 1:15, and then we'll be back with Ms. Hoover, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of City Council, Diane Hoover, Director of Recreation and Parks with the City of Bakersfield. And our budget presentation is accompanied by Raj Misri, our Business Manager. And in the audience, we have a few other employees, Darren Boudak, Assistant Director, Kentron, Park Superintendent, Devon Doherty, right here, Planning and Construction Manager. The mission of the Recreation and Parks Department is to enhance the quality of life through a variety of programs, parks, and partnerships. In order to do that, we were able to complete some capital improvement projects last year. We put shade structure over the playground at Wilson Park, and over Stern Park, and also Beale Park. This is a request that we get from many of our constituents out there. They want shade structures, and some of the new playground equipment has shade structures built in, like the one you see at Mace Marin. We were fortunate to get two big naming rights by the end of last year. We had $500,000 from Kaiser Permanente to name Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, and then also Torina Homes Sports Complex out at Mace Marin. And that's a $200,000 naming rights for three years. And we were able to cut the ribbon at the Phase Three of Bakersfield Sports Village this past spring. And also, we cut the ribbon at Torina Homes Sports Complex at Mace Marin, and that was the second phase. We completed, through a request from Councilmember Smith, a shade enhancement on the bike path between the Park at Riverwalk and Era Park. And we lost several trees through the drought back a few years ago, and we're gradually adding to those trees and replacing those trees. And this past year, we were able to plant 1,600 trees in streetscapes, medians, and some parks. We partnered with the Tree Foundation of Kern for the Arbor Day tree planting at Stone Creek. And these are volunteers, and the Tree Foundation provided the trees. Several of our partners I will highlight here, we have several more that, just not enough time. We can't do everything alone. We do rely very heavily on our sponsors and our partners. Kaiser Permanente with Operation Splash, First Five Kern, USA Swimming, and the Red Cross. All four of those help us provide swim programs, reduced-cost swim lessons, and swim, also the Junior Lifeguard Program, and other swim programs throughout the year at our pools. The CSUB Peak Partnership, they work with us on offering two runs, and then they work on other runs throughout the year as well, so St. Patrick's Day and Valentine's Day. These are students with the Kinesiology Program at CSUB, and in other volunteer-type Day. These are students with the Kinesiology Program at CSUB, and in other volunteer-type programs that they have at CSUB. Spectrum helps us with the Movies in the Park Program. Movies in the Park starts this Friday, and we go to every council ward throughout the summer to offer at least one movie in the summer. And we start and end at the Park at Riverwalk Spectrum Amphitheater. We have various fitness instructors. We work with the Kern County Health Department in offering free fitness programs in various city parks. The Cali Crown Classic came back to Bakersfield this year, and it was held at the Sports Village, Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, and that's an arm of the L.A. Galaxy. And the Bakersfield Symphony, they continue to offer the Beal Band Concerts throughout June at Beal Park, and this is a tradition that's been with us for over 65 years. To continue some of our partnerships, the Martin Luther King Egg Hunt is co-sponsored by Stay Focus Ministries, and also Assembly Member Rudy Salas helped with some prizes this year. And the Good Neighbor Festival, every fall, we have a big program at the Martin Luther King Park with the Southeast Neighborhood Partnership. Switching gears, our department is made up of three different divisions. We have the Recreation Division with the sports and adaptive programs. We have special events, and Saunders and Silver Creek Community Center, the Martin Luther King Community Center, and aquatics. All of these are year-round programs that we offer to the community all throughout the city. In the Parks Division, we're responsible for 59 parks, as well as all the streetscapes throughout the city. We estimate it's over 150 miles of streetscapes that we are maintaining every day throughout the year. And then we also have the craft workers and maintenance and repair staff that does a lot of our vandalism repair as well. And then thirdly, we do have the Administrative Division with the financial support, the planning and projects, and major repairs that happen out there. Our proposed budget is $20,759,979. It's an increase of almost 9%, but if you remember, we had a mid-year adjustment for the water increase, and also adding two maintenance staff for the additional parks that we're taking on. Our staffing complement, even though the city continues to grow at a steady rate, has remained pretty steady. We did, like I said, add two more staff members the end of the year, the beginning of this year, to 148. In our heyday, we did have 170 employees, and with the growth, we've cut back, and it's a struggle some days out there. You can see it, you can hear it in your constituents sometimes, why can't we take care of those weeds? Well, the next slide will show you that the acres maintained per park maintenance employee has increased to 14 acres per employee, and that's per day. And that's a lot of work for any employee to do, whether it's 100 degrees or 30 degrees. Well, I don't know if it ever gets 30 degrees, but you know what I mean. Whatever temperature, whatever day it is, they are out there maintaining the parks and streetscapes. And in addition to the growth that we've had in various parks and streetscapes, we've also grown in our program offerings to the community. We have several programs that are unique and just to Bakersfield, like our adaptive sports programs that you'll see a little bit of in this presentation. So our capital improvement projects that we're planning for the upcoming year include, as Jackie had mentioned, through CDBG, some improvements at the McMurtry Aquatic Center. The Aquatic Center is about 15 years old and is showing its age, and we need to replace several of the countertops in both the men's and women's restrooms, and some other cosmetic improvements to those restrooms and locker rooms. The Park Improvement Project Fund will include more pickleball courts at Drastrow Park. Pickleball continues to be one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States, and Bakersfield is no exception. We have more and more players, so we need to offer and provide more pickleball courts. Also, Kaiser Permanente Sports Village Phase Four is under development. We have gone through a grant process and hoping to get that grant, but we won't know the results of that grant until later in August or September. But in the meantime, we'll continue to build the stadium field that is under construction right now, and continue to enhance that whole area out there. Also, at Torina Home Sports Complex, the next phases will continue and continue to have projects out there. We're looking at possible basketball court and pickleball out there at Mace Marin in this coming year. And the playground resurfacing project, what happens at our playgrounds is we're required to have safety surfacing under certain pieces of equipment, like our slides and higher monkey bars and different things that are high. And over time, that surface becomes worn, or it possibly gets vandalized. So we do have to go back to many of our playgrounds and add that resurfacing or resurface what was existing. And the streetscape at Acres and McKee was a development that kind of abandoned their project and left the city high and dry on that streetscape. It is an eyesore in that neighborhood, and we have set aside some capital improvement dollars to be able to do that one. And then we will continue to replace the trees that have been lost throughout the city through that drought. And with Bridle Creek, this is our next park that is under development here. The SNS Homes are responsible for building this park, and we've been working closely with them to get this accomplished. Their agreement says that they need to accomplish it by next spring. As we move into the next part of the presentation, we thought we would show you rather than tell you of all the things that we do throughout the year. And I'll take questions after this portion is done. And thanks to Raj for completing this. He's, I think he did a really excellent job on presenting this. The music goes on past the presentation, so I'll take any questions at this time.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Diane. Just wanted to thank you for the trees in between the two parks that really tie Riverwalk Park and Era Baseball Fields together. People go out for the day, and a lot of walking back and forth, and it's just really great to tie that together with trees, and thank the Water Department for actually having some water in the river last month, that we can, when we walk over the bridge, we've got water to look at. So, and promised to get together with you the next week or so to go out and look at that Polo Grounds fence.
Ah, yes.
Great.
We continue to replace the different rails and posts on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Very good, very good, exciting. These last, these presentations, including yours, are some of my favorite subjects, so I've been a little wordy, and apologize if I have been. Okay, now, showing the playground covers, that is very helpful and important, but I'm wondering, are they permanent, or can they be removed during the months when you appreciate the sunshine?
Councilmember Sullivan, through Mayor Go, they are permanent. Once we install them, they are permanent.
I see.
And they are wind resistant, they hold up throughout the year.
I see, okay. Would be an interesting concept to have them removable, but certainly very important during the very hot months, so that's great. And yes, the Movies in the Park, it is so, it is such a pleasure to attend those and see all of the families that are there. You know, just everybody respecting one another, you know, the blankets and the chairs, and it's really wonderful, Diane, that it has been, that it's as well-attended as it is, and how it's, you know, in each part of town, each one of the parks, and certainly, is it the wards? One in each ward, so there are seven? Is that what it is?
Yes, and we add an additional movie at Spectrum Amphitheater, so we have one in the beginning and one at the end at the Park at Riverwalk, because they are major sponsors of that program.
Oh, great, yes. And how are those promoted, and where is the schedule? How do we find that?
So we have it in our brochure. We also have it on our Facebook page, and a separate flyer on our webpage as well.
Mm-hmm, I see. And the band concerts, are those, and how are those promoted, and are they also through the month of June?
Yes, they are all through the month of June. Well, this year, we're starting this Sunday, we didn't have one last night, so this coming Sunday, we'll start them, and we'll go four weeks. So we'll end on July 1st. So that is our patriotic concert, and we decided to have it in July instead of the last Sunday in June.
I see, oh, that's great. Those are so wonderful.
Thank you.
Just a great tradition.
It is a great partnership, thank you.
I love those. Excuse me. Okay, Diane, you know, you mentioned pickleball. I have been hearing so much about that, and should I be embarrassed to admit that I don't know what it is? Can you just explain it?
I'd be happy to. It is a combination of tennis, ping pong, and probably a little bit of badminton in there. It's a game that can be played on a tennis court, but it is almost half the court of a tennis court. It can be played with doubles or singles, and it's a smaller net as well. You have paddles instead of rackets, and you use a wiffle ball. And our city manager is an esteemed player.
Oh, my goodness. I think there should be a demonstration for those of us that are just getting into knowing what it's all about, Helen. I'm not surprised to hear that you are a champion of that. Well, I mean, promoting it. You don't have to be a champion of the game, but promoting the game, that's wonderful. Yeah, I've been hearing about that, so more and more people are learning. Okay, and you know, you mentioned, you showed the picture of the polar bear plunge.
Yes.
And I have to say, the year that Mayor Hall, no pressure, Karen.
I was there this year.
Yeah, well, I remember him. I think he actually went down the slide into the water, which I would never do that. I hate cold water, so I would never, I'd never do anything like that. But he did, that was quite a sight.
Maybe we'll have a council challenge for next year.
Oh, well, I'll be the scorekeeper. Okay, also, you mentioned the issue, maybe it was a streetscape, Acres and McKee. That's my neighborhood, and I'm not aware of that. What is the problem there?
That is a bare area that never got landscaped from the development. And typically, what happens in a new development is that the developer will put the streetscape in, and then they'll maintain it for a year, put it in a 365-day maintenance period. None of that was put in place at that location, so the city is going to step in and get that accomplished.
Wow, good for us. I know that's an expense we didn't plan on or want, so, well, that's great. What is the timeframe of that? When it will start and approximately when it will be finished?
We'll go into, what, design in the fall. As soon as the budget is approved, we go into a design phase, and then we'll go into implementation later than the fall, because it's better to plant material in the fall or spring as opposed to now when it's so hot.
Mm-hmm, I see.
But we'll be able to do that pretty quick.
That's great, Diane. Also, all the trees that we're replanting. I have an area that needs to be done. Can you have one of your staff members give me a call?
Sure.
So I can relay that to them. I've had people call me and remind me about that, so it is important and needed. And also, the spray park hours, now it has started, and are they, are we still on the drought schedule, having the hours decreased?
Councilmember Sullivan, no, we are not on a drought schedule. They are open 1:00 to 6:00 every day of the week, seven days until Labor Day.
1:00 to 6:00?
1:00 to 6:00, every day.
That's very generous, that's wonderful. And actually, I was one of the ones that just was very sad about the pools being taken away. But, you know, I went to a birthday party over the weekend, and I had mothers telling me how much they love the spray parks. So I had an attitude adjustment, and I mean, you know, and how wonderful to have the water available and the equipment available, no attendant necessary, but they were thinking, they didn't realize that the hour, that the hours were back to 6 o'clock. So, and I wasn't sure. So that's great, Diane. Okay, anyway, and July 4th, yes, then we're going to have our celebration out for July 4th.
Yes.
Yeah, that's wonderful. It's amazing how many people attend that. So, you know, we're doing good. A lot of family entertainment, and just a lot, lot to enjoy. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mayor. Diane, thank you so much for the presentation. It's fun to look at all of the various pictures and to see how much your department does day in and day out, and I appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
I also want to thank I also want to thank you for being good enough to come out with me on several different field trips throughout Ward 2 to take a look at different things in terms of Old Town Kern and some of the plant product there, and more recently in East Bakersfield to look at some of the medians and some of the trees that need attention. So I appreciate that. I also want to thank you for the recommendation for the pickleball court conversion. I know there are a lot of people who will be very excited about that, and certainly a lot of Westchester residents and others throughout the city who utilize those courts. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
I had a question, though, regarding the drought-related tree replacement. Do we know how many trees the $250,000 will purchase and replace?
Approximately anywhere from 1,600 trees that we did the previous year to 1,700, so right around that.
And do we have a map of those trees that we will replace, where they're located in the city, and what the plan of action is?
We do not have a map, but we can get that to you. We work with a tree service that assists us in doing that, but we try to get the whole city involved in the presentation I did last year about the different parts of the city that were heavily impacted. We're following that plan on through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Diane and team. Thank you, Raj, for sparing us the embarrassment when Diane and I ran through the spray park at Torina Homes after all the media had left. But Jackie ought to try that sometime. It's very lovely. Thank you very much. And now we'll have water. Water, water everywhere.
Well, good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor Go and members of the council. Art Chianello here, along with Water Resources Director Jason Metters and Business Manager Joe Navarro. We're here to present the proposed fiscal year budget for fiscal year 1819 for the Water Resources Department. Starting off with our organizational chart of our Water Department, our department consists of two divisions, the Agricultural Division and the Domestic Water Division, and each one of those divisions have their own budget. The Agricultural Division is responsible for daily operations of the Kern River, seven days a week, 365 days per year. It also manages the city's Kern River water rights for the benefit of all current and future citizens of Bakersfield. Within that division, the Hydrographic Section maintains the records of the river on behalf of all the Kern River interests, including the Water Master. The Domestic Water Division oversees water service to approximately 46,000 metered connections in the city's domestic water service area. And then we've added to our ORC chart this year, what you see there is the Kern River Groundwater Sustainability Agency, where the Water Resources Department provides support to the Kern River Groundwater Sustainability Agency with our partners Kern Delta Water District and Improvement District Number Four of the Kern County Water Agency. Several of our accomplishments in this fiscal year, it was a historic year on the river, 260% year. So the city employees, we've diverted over 2 million acre-feet of water through the Kern River and various canal systems, where on an average year, on an average year or 100% year, that would be more like 700,000 to 770,000 acre-feet. But we did approximately 2 million acre-feet, so that kept us very busy, not only during the day, but also on our swing shifts. After the water subsided, we were very busy with Kern River channel maintenance, as well as maintenance within our 2,800-acre recharge facility to get ready for, to do repairs and to get ready for future river flows. We've cleaned over 130 drainage basins within the city out of a complement of about 330 basins that we have. We've replaced approximately 85 concrete panels on a couple of city's concrete-lined canals that go through the city. And also, we've partnered with the Bakersfield Home Center, and we use their crews at least twice a week to help us with encampment cleanups on the Kern River and also cleanups within various sumps throughout the city. Continuing on, we've replaced approximately 110 service lines, the ones that are leaking from the water main up to the residences meter. It seems like we average approximately that much every single year. We've completed our five-well arsenic treatment project, and now we're on to our next emergency treatment project, which is installing treatment to remove TCP from groundwater within the city. So a little bit of background on the current project that we're undertaking. Thanks to City Council, in May 10th of 2017, the City Council adopted an emergency resolution, which helped us initiate the Emergency TCP Mitigation Project, which helped us to ensure that the city continues to deliver water that meets all of state water standards after January of 2018. So the following month in June of 2017, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted the new maximum contaminant level for 123 TCP, which was five parts per trillion. And the city's identified at least 35 wells that have been impacted with the contaminant TCP, and the emergency project that we're undertaking right now is to address treatment for those 35 wells. The same month in June 2017, City Council approved in a contract with WM Lyles Company to design and construct the TCP removal treatment equipment to address and remove TCP at these various sites, the 35-well sites. Phase 1 included 27 wells. They were the most critical wells and highest priority wells in our system that required treatment. And then we move on to Phase 2, which are eight remaining wells. I guess before I get to that, I'll say, in December of 2017, while we're under construction, the city settled with Dow Chemical and Shell and received a net amount of approximately $54 million, which covered the costs for the TCP mitigation project. We know that in January of 2018, the new drinking water regulation came into effect. Our first 27 critical wells have been under construction, and we're finishing up getting near substantial completion approximately July of this year. And then, right after that, City Council has already approved an amendment with WM Lyles to do the eight remaining wells, which will take us to the end of this calendar year for a total of 35 wells. And here is what these vessels look like that remove TCP. At some well sites, we have two vessels. At some well sites, we have four vessels. It all depends on how much water is pumping and the amount of flow and concentration of TCP that we need to remove. Within these vessels, we have, the filter media itself is granular activated carbon, and it's been proven to be the most effective in removing TCP from the groundwater. So other water conservation accomplishments for this fiscal year, we continue to use and rely heavily on the city-sourced mobile app, where we get a lot of water waste complaints that we respond to. In addition, we partnered with the other local water purveyors to get the word out for water conservation. We've also worked with the Water Association of Kern County, and we've contributed some money to go on radio commercials where there the slide says, "We streamed from May through September of 2017." That means it was like these 30-second radio commercial spots that were encouraging water conservation, and that was through cooperation of the Kern County Water Agency and other local water purveyors. In addition to that, we have an ongoing residential rebate program, up to $100 rebate if you purchase and install a new high-efficiency toilet. So it looks like we've given out 44 of those rebates, 65 rebates for high-efficiency clothes washers, and 50 smart irrigation controllers for your sprinkler system with a value of up to $125. And then, in addition to that, if you go to the website, you can ask for and receive a free conservation kit that can be used in your home. And then, we also are continuing our high-efficiency sprinkler nozzle program, and to get engaged with this program and to receive some high-efficiency sprinkler nozzles at no cost to install them at your house, you can go to these two websites that are showing up here on this particular slide. So in summary, the water conservation efforts are still occurring, as we reported to the city's Water Board last month. And the annual average decrease in water use comparing 2013, which the state said could be our baseline year, to 2018 is a 9% reduction. But we have to remember that during that time, our system population increased by about 11%. And so, therefore, if you look more about water used on gallons per person per day, and let's just take April 2013 versus April of 2018 for gallons per capita per day for residential water use, we actually reported to the state, we had a reduction of 22.1%. Our proposed budget for the Water Resources Department for fiscal year 1819, for the agricultural water budget, the budget shows an overall increase of 7.31%. This includes $119,000 increase for salaries, medical insurance, both for active employees and retirees, workers' compensation insurance, and increased CalPERS costs. An increase of $131,000 also is required for increased legal fees, vehicles, and river maintenance. For the domestic water budget, there's an overall increase of 16.69%. The major item which affected this increase is in the row where it says approximately $3,563,000 for the operating budget. And I can tell you that $3 million of that is estimated for increased operation and maintenance costs for the removal of TCP as we move forward throughout the fiscal year. So the department budget overall is proposing to increase by 15.14% over last year's budget. And our complement of employees is recommending to stay steady at 29 employees for our department. For the Agricultural Water Division, for the proposed budget of approximately $5.1 million, we have operations and maintenance at $2.3 million, which is approximately 46% of the budget. This category includes maintenance of all the river control structures, the city-owned canals, and operation of the Kern River 365 days a year. We have outside services, which includes funding to pay for annual contracts for repairs, such as concrete repair within the canals, earthwork to assist in river repairs, sump maintenance, and other required services. We have interfund charges of $472,000 approximately to pay for three Parkway maintainers. And then in addition, we have $725,000 for capital improvement projects, which we'll talk about in detail in a few slides after this one. For the estimated revenues for the Agricultural Water Division, around $4.4 million. We have contract water sales of $250,000, and that is a line item to account for water sales to agricultural water districts that are under existing contracts. We have a spreading facility of $2.1 million, and this includes revenues generated from various fees that we have, such as recharge fees, extraction fees, use of the city's ag wells, there's a fee for that, for the city's 2,800 acres. We have ag water sales, even though it's called ag water sales, a bulk of that are water sales to the treatment plants, the Northeast Cow Water Treatment Plant, the Northwest Cow Water Treatment Plant. It includes a sale to Kern County for Lake Ming and also for Hart Park. And then we have cost recoveries, where we get revenue from other water districts, which help us reimburse for the city operation and maintenance of jointly-owned canals. We have various clearing accounts for that, which covers the costs of the Water Master, river operations, and snow surveys. The Domestic Water Division proposed budget is around $27.8 million. A few of the categories is $7.5 million approximately for the budget for the ONM contract that we have with Cow Water to operate and maintain our system on a daily basis. We have electrical power costs for approximately $3.9 million. We have something called water supply programs of $4.2 million, and this includes the operation and maintenance costs for the treated water that we actually, for the treatment of the water that we get from Kern County Water Agency's Henry C. Gardette Drinking Water Plant, as well as the Cow Water's Northwest Treatment Plant. We have operation of $3.8 million for legal fees for our annual contracts to replace leaky service lines, as well as other contractors. And then there's also a line item for capital improvement projects, which we'll talk about in just a little bit. The next slide here is just a recap and consistent with what I reported to City Council in the past about this 16% rate increase that council approved in October of 2017. And just wanted to remind council also that through resolution to previously proposed rates to go into effect July of 2018 for 13% and 7.6% rate increase for July of 2019 has been rescinded, and we're not planning on implementing those. The TCP project itself is very large. At the end, it's going to consist of 104 of those vessels that we saw in the picture earlier. The projected completion date is November or December of 2018, and the theoretical operation and maintenance costs that we have, and the best information that we have at this time is that during the first year of operation, it'll be about $3 million. However, the actual operation and maintenance costs are not known at this time. We don't know, for example, the frequency of how often we have to change out this granular activated carbon. Will it be once every six months? Will it be once every year? It's a project of this scale, working with a contaminant level at a part per trillion is really a first for anywhere, not only in California, but I think in this nation. And so, all of the water purveyors are taking a wait-and-see approach on what the actual operating costs will be long-term. So based on some of these unknowns, and also knowing that the following years, the operation and maintenance costs will probably go up past $3 million, or they're projected to theoretically, staff is recommending at this time not to reduce the 16% rate increase that was previously approved. So for the Domestic Water Division, estimated revenues were around $30.2 million. We have residential and commercial metered water sales accounts for approximately $20.8 and $4.3 million respectively, which is about 83% of our projected budget. We have miscellaneous revenues, which account for plant checks, safety review and field inspections, construction water, to make construction water available to construction sites, fire hydrant sales and fire hydrant testing. And then public agencies are basically all other users, which includes parks and school districts, and accounts for approximately $1.8 million in revenue. So the capital improvement projects that we touched upon earlier, we broke it down into two divisions, the Agricultural Water Division and the Domestic Water Division. We're looking at river control structures, which is really kind of a novel idea. It's really a low-profile type of structure that could go across the river. The idea would be to retain sand from moving down the river to maintain the grade of the river. river. It would also help in preventing washout of some of the piles that are underneath the bridges at 24th Street and at Golden State. We know when we have high river flows, a lot of that sand gets, gets moved downstream. And then either Caltrans or the city water department has to go back and, and, and recompact that washed away sand that's at the, at the pile caps. So this idea of this, of this capital improvement project may help reduce future maintenance. We have our typical canal and storm drain fencing, concrete liner panel replacements for the canals. We have an instrumentation upgrade that we're recommending, actually it's in line with, with Senate Bill 88, whereby the year, I think 2020, they want us to have more instrumentation on river diversions and water flow measurements on the Kern River. So we're allocating $100,000 for that. We also recently filled out a grant application under the Water Smart Program, where we're hoping to get some grant money to assist with this Kern River SCADA capital improvement project. We have wellhead facility upgrades, $800,000 is, is, would be the cost for either outfitting or drilling a new water well. And then our service line replacement program of about $800,000 as well. The city got into the domestic water service business around 1977, where the first purchase was called the Ash Water District. And at that time, the city population was around 82,000, and we served about 15% of the city. Now in 2018, we have approximately 150,000 people that we serve. Our system has grown to serve approximately 39% of the total city population. Our city domestic service area that is shown here in light green, it goes approximately to Snow Road on the north, we have Stein Road on the east, and Taft Highway on the south. And it's shown in light green. The dark green is other, is, is Cow Water, and then we have Vaughn Water in purple. And so this is just showing us various water purveyors that we have within the urban area. In terms of the average monthly bill, of course, everyone uses a little bit different amount of water. So for a relative comparison, and, and we based it on what our average water bill is within our domestic water service area, we used 2,800 cubic feet per month for a certain-sized water meter, and then applying our water rates and other people's water rates. And this is after our 16% rate increase. You can see how we compare with other local water purveyors, or relatively compare with other purveyors within urban Bakersfield. So we're the second lowest. And then we chose also other cities that have domestic water systems of similar size, and again, applying the, the metric of 2,800 cubic feet per household per month. What would that average bill be for other comparable cities? And you can see the, the comparison here on this particular slide. So that concludes our budget presentation for the Water Resources Department. We want to say thank you very much, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Art. Called Art Friday, I seen water in the river, I said, "Good work, Art." Appreciate it every time we can get some water in the river. Really makes for a, a different community. I also noticed along Trucks and some of the carbon right next to your new wells area, have you washed that out already, or is that what happens when you wash them out?
Oh. So on Trucks and Avenue, we have six new vessels there next to the water storage tank. To, to the north, there is a new sump that we had built for backwashing the carbon. That's only done on the initial fill. When you backwash, some of the lighter carbon fines get washed out and go to the sump. It's very easy to clean once it dries up and we get that site. Well, actually, the site's online right now, but we could just go in there and scrape the top off and take that, that black carbon away, if that's what you're referring to.
Right.
Yeah, that could be removed, and it's intended to be removed.
Great, thank you. And I think I made a comment last year, and then I never heard a follow-up about the name of the ag water division, maybe it doesn't fit anymore, and if we could look at that, if it still makes sense to you, I just, I never heard a conversation about it, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Yeah, thank you, Art. With the new, these new TCP filter system, the tanks you showed us, I guess those are the systems. Do they filter anything but TCP?
They, they filter, yes, that's a great question, Councilmember Freeman. They filter more than, than just TCP. There's, it's sized and designed, the vessel is sized and designed to remove TCP effectively. But we know that when, when you're putting water through granular activated carbon, a lot of aesthetics such as tastes and odors will be removed. So there'll be an improvement to the quality of the water, not just removal of the TCP, but water quality aesthetics. And there could be some other constituents, perhaps, that were already meeting the maximum contaminant levels, but yes, they will get removed as well. So granular activated carbon doesn't remove all constituents. Sometimes other types of treatment is more effective than granular activated carbon. But for certain constituents, and certainly above and beyond TCP, it will be absorbed, adsorbed by the granular activated carbon.
Will, will this replace or decrease the amount of filtering we have for other contaminants from our other systems, I mean, as time goes forward?
Um, I'm sorry.
I see you, you're, you're, you're taking lots of contaminants out of the water, and you're filtering them prior to the TCP. Will these new tanks cover, cover some of those contaminants that we're already doing so that, you know, we, we, we can spend less on that in the future because we're spending all this money on operating these?
I think it's possible. It may depend on what the new contaminant or what the new level will be for some future laws. I will say as an example, though, that for arsenic, the granular activated carbon is not effective for arsenic. So at several of our sites, we have extra tanks because we need ferric oxide to remove arsenic, and then we need granular activated carbon to remove TCP and some other constituents. And so the answer is, maybe it depends on the constituent that we may need to remove in the future.
Okay. One other question, you may not know the answer to this, but this all came about from some sort of fertilizer, fumigant or something used years ago. Is there any information on whether this, I'll call it fumigant, I don't know what it is, but whether it degrades and disappears over time? Does it have a useful life, so then in 50 years, it's gone or half-gone? Or does anybody, did it, did the powers that be ever do any research on that whatsoever?
I'll give you my quick knowledge of it, and if I don't catch everything, then maybe, maybe Jason could answer that as well. But I believe it's going, because he's done some studying on TCP, but I, I believe that it's, it's around for a long time. It's rather stubborn type of contaminant that's in the ground. And I don't, I don't know what, what the half-life might be, or how long it'll be around, but I think it degrades very slowly, and we, we expect it to be in the ground for a long time.
Okay. Art, thank you.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good report, Art. Very good. And it really, it amazes me how we have, how you are able, your department is able to gauge the water use to such detail. That's pretty, pretty amazing to me. Art, looking at this map here between the city of Bakersfield boundary and Cow Water, is that, is that New Stein, is it to the west of New Stein that the city takes over?
Stein Road, right. So to, to the west of Stein Road is where the city takes over, yes.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I thought so. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now on to Public Works. Least glamorous, but, but very essential. Maybe you can make the presentation glamorous.
Yeah. Five minutes. Five minutes. I thought you said five o'clock.
No.
Sure?
Just the exciting highlights.
Honorable Mayor and council members, I'm Nick Fidler, Public Works Director. And today, I'm pleased to present the Public Works Fiscal Year 1819 operating and CIP So Public Works is made up of 11 various divisions and includes the Bakersfield Municipal Airport. Today, I have with me almost all of my division heads and several of our business managers and accountants. And I'd also like to acknowledge Georgina, my assistant, the Public Works Director, who is very instrumental in preparing this PowerPoint presentation, along with Yacenia and Christina Budak, who prepared the presentation as well. As you can see, we're proposing five additional employees for fiscal year 1819. This puts us back to a level exactly 10 years ago in 2008, 2009. We are proposing the five new positions to include a solid, one solid waste equipment operator to service residential routes for growth to the city, one maintenance craft worker for the Bakersfield Municipal Airport. This position converts a temporary, a temporary employee to a full-time employee. They'll improve service and maintenance to the airport. One motor sweeper operator to add street sweeping for residential streets to accommodate growth in the city. This is also a restoration position. And then lastly, two fleet mechanic two positions. These positions will be added to the night shift to, to improve equipment availability for the solid waste and street sweeping divisions. The top three positions are fully funded with enterprise funds. The two fleet mechanic two positions are primarily funded with enterprise funds. The operating budget by all funds, personnel budget increased by approximately $1.5 million or an increase of 3.5%. The operating budget increased by approximately $2.5 million to an increase of 3.8%. And the capital outlay operating increased by approximately $4.4 million, an increase of 51%. The $4.4 million increase is the equipment replacement budget and relates primarily to equipment within the enterprise funds. Therefore, there's no general fund impact associated with this increase. The total fiscal year 1819 increase budget is, I'm sorry, the total fiscal year 1819 proposed budget is $123.7 million or an increase of 7.2%. There are several factors which have led to the increase in the equipment replacement budget. A couple of examples include, since the downturn in the economy, equipment replacement was deferred for the past several years, which has resulted in an overrated fleet. In many cases, we are experiencing increased downtime and higher maintenance costs to operate older equipment. Some examples include a side loader, an average cost to operate mile, per mile for equipment recently replaced is about $5, compared to an older piece of equipment at $7.47. And to the very other end of the spectrum, a loader, a new loader costs about $30.26 per mile, to where an older piece of equipment will cost $93.89. The operating budget by funding source, the general fund is proposed to decrease approximately $3.3 million or 12.5%. This, this decrease is due to the proposed transfer of the signing marking section to the, from the general fund to the gas tax fund. The proposed transfer to the gas tax fund is made possible due to favorable TRIP funding that has been most recently received. The gas tax fund is proposed to increase approximately 3.3% or a total of 100, or 3.3 million, a total of 100%. Again, due to the transfer of the signing and marking section. Enterprise funds, enterprise fund is to increase by 5.2% primarily due to electricity usage and the processing of wood chips and recyclables. Equipment management is proposed to increase by 20.2%, primarily due to the $4.4 million increase to the equipment replacement budget, for a total increase of approximately $8.36 million or 7.2%. So where does the money come from? The larger source being the refuse fund at nearly $51 million or 41%. The sewer fund, nearly $16 million at 13%. The second largest source being the enterprise fund at approximately $28.5 million or 23%. The general and development funds at 23.3 or 19%. And all other funds at $4.9 million or 4%. Operating budget summary by division, largest being, again, the largest being the solid waste division, second being the equipment division. The four engineering divisions, design subdivision, traffic, and construction were combined. This slide represents the department's commitment to council goals to maintain and improve the quality of existing surface streets and arterials by continuing to enhance the road resurfacing program, including increasing funds for the street maintenance. As you can see, that one of the biggest increases to this year is the Senate Bill Number One at $6,235 million. This is a new program, actually the second year of this program. That is anticipated to reach up to $8.6 million next fiscal year. So really helping us improve our ability to maintain our streets. And historically, the city's average expenditures for road maintenance and improvements was about nine point, 19.2 million annually. This is prior to implementation of the pavement management system and the SP1 funding. So moving into proposed rate increases, refuse rates, we're proposing a 3.5% rate increase. This 3.5% rate increase is consistent with the hauler's contract. This is based on the Consumer Price Index. Residential customers will go from $200 per year to $207 annually. Residential sewer rates, we are proposing no increase to, to the proposed for fiscal year 1819. And then commercial sewer surcharge, fiscal year 1819 is the last year of a five-year phase-in period for commercial sewer surcharges and wastewater characteristics. And then sewer connection fee, fiscal year 1819 is year two of a five-year phase-in in period for sewer connection fees. Connection fees for a single-family home will increase by $200, going up to $4,400 next fiscal year. So this graph shows the history of the refuse rates versus the Consumer Price Index. You can see between years, fiscal year 2009, 10 to 2014, 15, we're able to hold our rates flat. At this point, we're no longer able to do that due to increased utility costs, PGE costs, and also the additional cost to process wood chips and recyclables. We still are under the Consumer Price Index, though. And this graph is very key. You can see that the city of Bakersfield, out of 36 cities studied, that we are the, at the bottom of the, the list for the annual fees for sewer waste, refuse collection. Moving into accomplishments, the TRIP division, the 24th Street Improvement Project, we have completed the, the design and are, are almost complete with the right-of-way. The sound wall construction completed last month. They are in construction of Trucks and Avenue operational improvements. This is anticipated to be complete by the end of this year. We are in progress with the Bakersville, the Beltway operational improvements, which is anticipated to be completed this summer. The Kern River Bridge improvements, which is anticipated to be complete summer of 2019. This has been a very fun project to watch. You can start to see the steel structures for the false work starting to span the Kern River Bridge. It's a, the Mohawk off-ramp is what you're looking at when you're, when you're seeing that steel, steel structure spanning over the Kern River. The TRIP- The trip action plan is to continue projects currently under construction. The Centennial Corridor bid, ward, and begin construction of Phases II, III, IV, and IVA. We anticipate to get all those projects out to bid this, this year, before the end of this year. And then also the Stockdale Highway and Enos Lane Roundabout, which we're nearing the completion of design and right-of-way process. So that will allow us to put this project out to bid this summer as well. Action planned for 24th Street is to bid, award, and begin construction later this summer, or this year. Roadway widening from Kern River Bridge to M Street. Engineering's accomplishments, the Kaiser Permanente Sports Village, which recently had its opening ceremony, and we completed the sports field lighting in the Phase II soccer fields. The Torino Home Sports Complex at Mason Rin, Phase II was recently had a opening ceremony. The pavement rehabilitation on Wilson Road from South Rill to State Route 99, which was an SP1 fund, was completed. A Street from Brundage Lane to California Avenue will be starting construction very shortly. And Auburn Street from Oswald to Fairfax also is planned to be at the next council meeting for award. Pavement rehabilitation continued. Hughes Lane from Wilson Road to Ming Avenue, Truxton Avenue, T Street to Bill Avenue, and White Lane from Union Avenue to Cottonwood, all three of these are planned to be in construction this summer. Continuing with accomplishments, storm drain improvements, Tevis Ranch, Office Center Drive, these designs are complete. Sewer improvements, Hosking Avenue Acres and White Lane at Monitor, White Lane and Monitor is currently in construction. And sewer rehabilitation, Campus Park area from Old River Road to Gosford Road is, will be in construction within the next week or so. Engineering's miscellaneous achievements, Amtrak solar installation and parking lot. Last week, they finished paving the parking lot. And currently, our Streets Division is working on a parking lot improvements at the West Side Police Substation. Engineering's fiscal year 1819 action plan is to continue to advance the city's CIP plan, continue submitting applications for federal and state funding grants, which we've been very successful with lately, and continue to incorporate ADA Transition Plan and Complete Streets Policy into projects, and continue to improve safety to development community, or computer, improve services to development community. Accomplishments, as of right now, many of you are aware, we're in the process of upgrading or converting several high-pressure sodium lights to LED. As of last week, the, the company was about, had about 4,500 streetlights converted. I imagine this week, they're somewhere in the range of 5,000 to 6,000 with the goal of completing all 12,800 light fixtures by the end of this month. The contractor has continued to bring on more forces in order for them to meet that schedule. So, General Services accomplishments, removed graffiti from 12,800 sites. They've restriped the bike lane, bike trail from Enos Lane to China Grade Loop, and they responded to over 2,600 streetlight service requests. Continuing with General Services accomplishments, Rabo Bank and Arena, Rabo Bank Arena and Convention Center improvements, relocated and remodeled modular building at the Animal Care Center, completed Phase III of the Community Development Lobby remodel project. Thirty-two fluorescent fixtures were converted to light-emitting diodes, LED, at the Iceport Center, and completed construction of Airport's North Taxi Lane pavement reconstruction project. They can, continue, their action plans continue to improve anti-graffiti program, review and pursue energy efficiency projects for city facilities, and continue to complete ADA improvements for city's facilities and complete update to the airport layout plan. This was a, this remodel was recently completed in the lobby of City Hall North. It turned out very nice. Almost wouldn't know that that didn't exist there for, since we acquired the building. The Streets Division accomplishments, they resurfaced and reconstructed 85 lane miles of city streets, includes SP1-funded projects. We have been, our Streets Division has been very aggressive about completing all these SP1-funded projects as soon as we can and have done a very good job of doing that. Sealed 234 street miles with surface penetration sealer. They updated the pavement management system on a continual basis and then maintained the SCADA system on all city sewer and storm lift stations, constructed new curb gutter and sidewalk and CDBG-eligible areas. Continuing with accomplishments, they paved four miles of city bike path. Continue to work at Sports Village and concrete work and paving of streets. Completed grading and sidewalk work at Mason Rin Sports Complex. And then ADA improvements, PT Misia, TDA bus stop improvements. Then, that's been a very successful program as well in coordination with GET as to making sure that all the bus stops have adequate ADA access. Moving into Streets fiscal year 1819 action plan, continue to preserve and maintain city streets by utilizing the pavement management system. Continue work in CDBG areas with new funding sources. Continue video inspection of sewer mains for maintenance and repairs. And continue work on ADA Transition Plan by improving ADA access ramps and sidewalks with various funding sources such as TDA, SP1, and CDBG. Again, we've asked GET to provide additional TDA funds for the next fiscal year. Moving into Equipment accomplishments, they continued to replace, continued replacement of aging equipment and then continued commitment to clean air vehicles. They replaced 88 equipment items for fiscal year, which includes seven alternative vehicles. Equipment action plan, continue to convert more of the city's fleet to clean air vehicles, expedite the purchase of equipment replacement budget. Wastewater accomplishments, they produced over 203 million gallons of reclaimed water. This water has been used at the Sports Village and all the landscaping around the wastewater treatment plant and including some of the operations of the plant itself, wastewater treatment plant number three. They produced 34 percent of their wastewater's energy consumption. Plant Two CoGen, 1.9 million kilowatts per hour. Plant Three CoGen, 3.7 million kilowatts per hour. And Plant Three Solar, 0.8 million kilowatt hours. They replaced two recirculation pumps at Plant Two and then replaced four digester mixing pumps at Plant Three. Fiscal year 1819 action plan, procure computerized maintenance management software, rehabilitate grit chamber and trickling filter, recirculation pumps at Plant Two. This is a multi-year project, and rehabilitate two primary clarifiers at Plant Three. Solid wastes accomplishments, the anti-litter efforts. They've had 575 cleanups, 7,500 volunteers, and 155,000 pounds of litter collected. The homeless crew efforts, they have 52 workers working weekly and four crews on litter daily. As you can see, the turnout for Great American Cleanup was held on April 21st. Solid waste accomplishments, they did do the first phase, their compost automa, automation. Gosh, tough word. Moving materials via electric conveyor versus diesel trucks. This is reducing air emissions and conserving 66 percent of water usage. This, like I said, this is the first phase. We're continuing this process in order to get the whole system automated. The wood chip challenge continues. Delano Energy used to provide revenue of approximately $600,000 per year for wood chips. Due to the closure of the Delano Energy, the city now pays to dispose wood chips at other outlets. Staff has creatively found new outlets. Long-term solutions may include small-scale electric generation facility or a large-scale soil amendment on City Farm currently be studied. Future council funding appropriations may be required. On a side note, we have been coming up with some alternative wood chips that we've found, we may have found a little niche for agricultural that we're still exploring. The solid waste 1819 action plan is to continue with the anti-graffiti litter efforts, anti-litter efforts, develop new uses for surplus wood chips, and continue outreach for commercial recycling. I don't, I'm not sure if you're aware, but China used to take most recycled projects, products, have now shut down their harbors for recycling. So the, the whole nation is suffering from this, and we're, we're just part of it trying to find how to best recycle some of the blue cart materials. Moving into the fiscal year 1819 Capital Improvement Program. The Public Works Department is approximately $202, $203 million for a total of $209 million citywide. Street improvements, ADA improvements, street improvements on Plans Road east of Cottonwood, several CDBG areas that were mentioned earlier in Development Services. And then curb gutter and sidewalk improvements in non-CDBG areas, Oleander area. This one is made available by SB1 loan repayment. Streets Division, pavement maintenance, again, citywide maintenance, and then specific list of several SB1-specific funded projects. Pavement rehabilitation on predominantly federally funded with SB1 providing the local match. We have four different locations there. And then three different locations of bike and pedestrian improvements. Continuous street improvements, Bridge Preventative Maintenance Program. There's 11 locations predominantly federally funded with a local match of SB1. And then major, a bridge rehabilitation on North Chester and Kern River. This was a result of a small fire set up by the homeless and then right-of-way sort of acquisition for the West Beltway project. We're moving into some studies to facilitate the downtown High-Speed Rail Master Plan, the downtown master sewer study, and the downtown master drainage study. And then sewer improvements, rehabilitation of Bailey Street Lift Station, and then cleaning of the Benoitina Vista and McCutcheon Sewer Line. Sewer drain improvements continued. Rehabilitation of Storm Lift Station at Pistol Range, the design of Talisman Drive Storm Lift Station project and design modification of 24th Street and Oak Street Storm Lift Station. All these lift stations are very old, some of them are undersized, so working to bring those up to date. And then ongoing program to rehabilitate sewers, sewer and storm lift stations. Bakersfield Municipal Airport, three different projects there. Airport Northwest Taxi Lane Rehabilitation, Section C. We, standard hangar door replacements and then miscellaneous repairs throughout the facility. And then park improvements, same, which was described in Recreation and Parks Department's budget. Kaiser Permanente Sports Village Phase Four and Torino Home Sports Complex at Mason Rin. Wastewater Treatment Plant Facilities, improvements at both plants, too. Several different type of pump rehabilitations and a lot of rehabilitation of their various treatment plant operations. And then a maintenance management software. The Green Waste Facility, pavement repairs, feasibility study for power generation, and then compost automation project, and then grading and drainage improvements. Several miscellaneous projects through, through facilities throughout the city and including the parking study for downtown. 24th Street Improvement Project, the trip, I'm sorry, it's trip CIP. 24th Street Improvement Project, the Centennial Corridor Phase II, Phase III, and Phase IV and IVA, and Stockdale Highway and Enos Lane Roundabout. We're going to be very busy at the end of this, the remainder of this year, putting all these projects out to bid. And that completes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, you, your division heads, your employees have just been fantastic with me and helping me within Warren 7, and I just want to tell you a thank you. They do just a fantastic job. I could spend probably a half an hour, and I won't, just going through the list of, of people that have helped me over there. A couple of quick questions for you. The beautification effort, that facade that we've talked about for the Hosking Bridge, do you have an ETA when that's going to go up or be finished?
We're, we're moving towards that direction. We've had, my, my architect has been very busy this last couple of months with the Sports Village and Mason Rin. They do have some conceptual renderings. We've been working with Caltrans on, so we are going to be starting to focus back in on that and getting that back on and forefront of Caltrans.
Okay, thanks, Nick. Next item, when you talked about the blue carts and the reduction of, or I guess the stop of those recyclables going to China, we want to be environmentally responsible, but we don't want to incur extra costs either. If we just went back to, you know, putting that stuff in a landfill, would that be a savings? Would it not? Would it just be a wash?
We, we still have to pay landfill fees, so there wouldn't be a savings. But we also have mandates that we have to meet through California Recycle that we divert so much materials from the landfills. In order to do that is the recyclables. So you're not really making any savings, but you can risk yourself at being fined by CalRecycle if we were to do that.
Okay, thanks. And the last thing, and I haven't checked the website lately, do we advertise that our wood chips are free?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good enough.
Kevin spends a lot of time going to various locations telling them they're free.
All right, thanks, Nick. Doing a great job.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Every year, I'm always amazed at the graffiti removal, 12,800. That's, that's a great job, and we'd be a very different-looking city if we didn't stay on top of that. And that, and also the 155,000 pounds of litter. And that system where we use the homeless center and contract, I mean, that's a win-win for everybody and greatly appreciated. We've been talking about the feasibility of the chip electric generation plant for some time now, so look forward to seeing if that can move forward or not. That's a very creative idea, I think.
We, we've had at least three or four companies come in and do, give presentations on that process. So we, we've explored several. I know that some other cities are actually in the process and their environmental document process of doing this.
Great. Appreciate the new paving on the bike path and the striping. It's just a great facility and glad we're able to maintain it. On the, your local road maintenance sheet, historically, the city's spent 19 million and now we're up to 30 million. The question arises, and I think that it's a requirement, in order to get the SB1 money, we have to continue our historical.
Yeah, there was.
The question would be, well, we're spending this much more, couldn't we cut that back? Or what's the answer to that?
You mean, cut it back, what do you mean, cut it back?
Well, we're spending 30 million now, and we used to spend 19 million.
Correct. We are overachieving what the requirement is for SB1. Is that your question?
Yes.
Yeah, we are well overachieving that requirement. We are trying to make a big dent in, in improving our quality of the streets. Our goal is to get the Payment Condition Index to 80 and above as soon as possible because then you can use SB1 funds on various other improvements.
Councilmember Smith, if I might add, we are quite optimistic that the upcoming fiscal year will be the end of the trip match commitments for us as we will be through the program. That will free up the monies that have been dedicated to the trip match to local roads in the future. That includes the utility service, utility franchise surcharge, transportation development fees, and guest tax money. So that will allow us to significantly improve these numbers in 1920 and beyond.
Very good. Thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Nick, sort of the question nobody wants to ask, but what will be the impact to our budget if this gas tax recall passes?
The impact to our budget?
Yeah, to the monies, we, it looks like we've shifted some to other categories, and the budget you've proposed, what will be, I mean, it will, we'll have to decrease the budget, I assume, because some of this budget came from monies from the gas tax, if they repeal the whole thing.
Correct. There's a combination of things working here, as Alan has indicated, we're nearing the completion of the trip program funding, which will, could offset if that did, if SB One was repealed. The biggest, I don't know, the biggest downturn of the repeal of SB One is all the money that this region has received because of SB One, and being able to improve the infrastructure, not only on our systems, but state and county systems. The roadway networks just need that additional funds. The gas tax has not kept up with the usage of our roadway networks. Obviously, back in the nineties, a car would get ten to twelve miles a gallon. Now, a car gets thirty to forty miles a gallon, so it's doing that much more damage to the roadways, and we haven't increased our gas tax. On top of that, you have electric vehicles that are on the roads that are paying no type of gas tax to use these resources that we have. So our infrastructure needs this, the SB One funding to continue.
No, I realize that. I didn't know if anybody had a ballpark as to are we going to have a three-million-dollar blow, a five-million-dollar blow? Do we know yet?
So, over a ten-year program, the city's estimated to receive eighty-six million dollars out of SB One. That's just for road maintenance. That doesn't take into account all the various grants that are available, that we've been very successful at. So you're looking at a direct loss of eighty-six million dollars over ten years. Now, in regards to our current budget, right now, we're at six-point-two million dollars. If it's repealed sometime in, obviously, it goes to election November, they'll probably, if it does get repealed, it will stop in January. I'm not sure how that'll affect that six-point-two million dollars that we have, because they basically would have collected from December to December through the program.
Okay, but eighty-six million less what we already got?
Correct.
Eight-point-six million a year, plus whatever grant funds, which I don't know if they could have doubled that over a ten-year period, but pretty significant blow to our budgets if this, you know, if that's what the voters.
You said we went and doubled eighty-six million over?
No, I just said, there's a lot of capital improvement grants that go along with it. I don't know if they could be over ten years and other eighty-six million, or a substantial number. So we're talking about maybe, you know, up to a couple of hundred million dollars. That's a huge amount of money that unfortunately, you know, we would, I think, we've probably been a greater beneficiary, perhaps, especially because of the grants, than other cities, because maybe you guys hustled more than, if we're ready to take funds. So I just, you know, I just think it's good to become aware of that, that's sort of a contingency out there.
Councilmember Freeman, I can give you one specific one. For the last fifteen, eighteen years, we've realized as a community that if we get Project Shovel Ready, we're in an advantageous position to get grants from the federal and state government. So the next one that we're planning to get shovel-ready would be the Hagaman Flyover, sixty-three million, I think, or thereabouts. And one of the things we would pursue in the future, if that money stays in place, is a grant to fund the construction of the Hagaman Flyover. Can't guarantee that we'll get it, but we've had about a seven-hundred-and-fifty betting average on our other applications this past year.
It's kind of a mixed bag. Personally, you save a little more at the pump. From a community standpoint, commutes get a lot longer, traffic gets a lot worse, and we don't have the same quality of road system, so, okay, well, thank you.
Councilmember Weir.
Thanks, Mayor. Alan, you remember some time ago, maybe it was last fall or something, they were spreading woodchips along One Seventy-Eight, the south side, and you were up there, and you saw that, and how nice it looked?
Yes, I think it was a miracle.
It was a miracle. You know, they finished that little section, and they never came back. So now we have vast amounts of land up there in need of woodchips, and extra woodchips out there. We need to bring that together somehow, because we can get those spread up there pretty quick, and it'll make a huge improvement to the roads up there, because they look like a third-world country at this point. So if we could work on that, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your efforts, Mr. Fidler. You mentioned in the upcoming action plan, the computerized system software for wastewater. Is that some kind of new technology that's going to have a significant impact on management?
Yes, the computer maintenance system for the treatment plants, there are several components out there in both plants, several mechanical components. This system will monitor the maintenance activities of each one of those components. It'll give us timeframes of when we're supposed to do scheduled preventative maintenance or replacement of those components, so ultimately helping staff reduce major repairs.
With the almost thirteen thousand LED lights, what's the impact anticipated on service requests? So last year, we had twenty-six hundred service requests. Will those go down with brand-new streetlights, or are those somewhat not related?
We're very hopeful they will go down, because the average replacement life of a LED streetlight is twelve to fifteen years, to where a high-pressure sodium is between three and five years. So we're hopeful that with these new fixtures that reduce the amount of callouts needed for replacements, you will always get more other types of callouts, whether it be a damaged wire, a knock-down pole. This will help us be able to go take care of those in a more, in a faster timeframe, and then also give us the ability to go out and replace some of the old damaged poles that have been out there for quite some time.
Thank you. Want to do a special shout-out to Shonka Call's team. They're invisible sometimes, but do amazing work, so thank you very much. And Sean, if you wouldn't mind just stopping by when we're finished, that'd be great. Anything else, councilmembers? Seeing nothing else, we are adjourned at two forty-nine.